Transpired.
Close.
And in the county, I think that's, we were very wise.
Yeah, exactly.
All right, recording, we're recording and live.
Okay, I'd like to call this meeting of the Gang City Council, October 27th, 2020, meeting to order. If everybody stand for the pledge with me. Pledge is to the flag of the United States.
From America.
America.
To the Republic.
Stand.
Nation divisible with Liberty and Justice for All.
The routine justice for all.
Okay, Julie, you want to do roll call for elected official?
Okay, Mr. Baldinger.
Here.
Mr. Botkins.
Here.
Ms. Earlston.
Here.
Dr. Fowler.
Here.
Mr. Ivy.
Here.
Mr. Richard.
Here.
Mr. Triplett.
Here.
Okay, roll call for elected official or.
Yeah.
Safety Director and the elected officials.
Mayor Larry.
Here.
Auditor Trish.
Here.
Director of Law Palmer.
Here.
Treasurer Sparks. Safety Service Director Ward.
Here.
Okay, everybody have a chance to take a look at October 13th, 2020, regular meeting minutes. Whenever you're ready, I'll take a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
And I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion to approve the minutes of the October 13th meeting. And a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Okay, the minutes of the October 13th, 2020 meeting are approved. Next, we have, is there any changes? I think we've got some additions to the agenda tonight.
Yeah, there's four that need voted on the agenda.
Going to be ordinance 2020 day 69. Do I have a motion to add that to the agenda tonight?
I'll make the motion to add ordinance 2020 dash 69 to the agenda.
Okay.
Second that.
Okay, I believe we need a roll call for this, Julie.
Yes, you do. Yep. Yep. Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance, ordinance number 2020 day 69 is now added to the agenda for tonight. Next, we have ordinance number 2020 day 70 needs added to the ordinance or the agenda.
I will make a motion to add ordinance number 2020 dash 70 to the agenda.
Okay, do I have a.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to add ordinance 2020 day 70 to the agenda tonight and a second, roll call, Julie.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Okay, number 2020 day 70 is now approved and on the agenda for tonight. Next, we have ordinance number 2020 day 71 needs to be added to the ordinance. Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion to add 2020 dash 71 to the agenda tonight.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion to add ordinance number 2020 day 71 to the ordinance tonight and a second, roll call, Julie.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 20 day 71 is now added to the ordinance or to the extended tonight, we got ordinance on the mind. Finally, we got ordinance number 2020 day 72 needs to be added tonight. Do I have a motion to add that?
I'll make a motion to add ordinance 2020 dash 72 to the agenda.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion to add ordinance 2020 day 72 and a second, roll call, Julie.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Ms. Bot, Mr. Botkins.
Yeah.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Okay, ordinance number 2020 day 72 is now added to the agenda for tonight. Now, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
I'll make a motion to approve the amended agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the amended agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Okay, the amended agenda is approved. Uh, takes us to the first piece of legislation. Uh, ordinance number 2020 day 67, State Route 598 widening parcels, first reading. Julie, would you like to read that?
Ordinance number 2020 to 67 entitled ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to accept certain easements and acquisition of property relating to three parcels adjacent to the State Route 598 widening project to execute any and all documents relating thereto and to pay the owners of said parcels the negotiated amounts for the acquisition of said property rights and declaring an emergency.
Okay, if I remember right, this is the three parcels that we added in Finance Committee on Night, Julie.
Yeah, this was three that we, they've negotiated the amounts with the owners for, so out of the, the whole, we had 25 parcels inside the city limits and 10 parcels outside the city limits. We've already done 10 of the properties inside the city limits, this is three more that are inside the city limits. So of the 35, we've, this is, this is 13, this is, you know, 11, 12, and 13.
Yeah, that's what I thought. So yeah, this went through Finance Committee.
Yes.
And to the agenda. So does anybody want to add anything to this, Mayor or Safety Service Director?
Thanks, Gail. I'll just add into what Julie said. We'll see, I don't want to say these trickle in, but I would expect over the next a couple, three meetings that, that will repeat this process. And that's really just sort of the nature of it. I think we have every reason to, to think that we're going to be able to negotiate with everyone. So that's really all I have, Gail.
Yes, Gail, this is just a methodical, step by step in the process of the widening. So with that, I'd like to suspend the rules and go to the final reading on ordinance 2020 dash 67.
Okay, Dr. Fowler made a motion to suspend the rules and go to the final reading on 2020 day 67. Do I have a second?
Second that.
Okay, Mr. Botkin seconds. Roll call, Julie.
Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes.
Gail, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Mark.
Why was the one parcel so much? Does anybody know?
Um, some of these purchases were, in the past, were permanent easements and not temporary easements. I maybe, if I'm wrong on that, maybe the mayor or somebody can elaborate more on that.
Mr. Baldinger, you're absolutely right. The one that's, the one that's substantially more than the other involves the actual acquisition of a permanent warrant. It's a permanent warranty deed, so we're actually acquiring the property, not just a temporary easement.
Okay.
It's over half an acre that they're getting, so.
Yep, yeah, it's bigger than the others too, yeah.
I don't add that it's out on the north end of the project, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, it's the JBS development.
Yep.
Part of that.
It'll be the southwest corner, and we are going to widen there with the turn lane and so.
Gail.
Yeah, Mark.
I'll make a motion to pass this ordinance.
Okay, Mark makes a motion to pass ordinance number 2020 day 67.
I'll second that.
And Botkin seconds. Julie, roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Your Botkins. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes. Okay, ordinance number 2020 day 67 passes as a final reading, seven to zero. And that brings us onto the next one, which is ordinance number 2020 day 68.
Ordinance number 2020 to 68 entitled ordinance amending ordinance number 2019 85 permanent 2020 appropriations by transferring funds in, in various funds and declaring an emergency.
Yeah, this also came through Finance Committee the other night, these appropriations. I'm going to let Brian Trish take this one and explain it.
Okay, this is a appropriation from within the funds. It's not new money, it's just moving some money around. Section two is $25,000 being moved from technical, technical services to infrastructure to finish up some of the problem, not problems, projects on the Harding Way Project or the urban paving. Section three is moving some money for the law director from the part-time wages and salaries. If you remember correct, earlier this year, we thought we would have someone hired to work with Thomas's office. They left.
Thanks.
We're going to, we're going to move those monies to legal services to anticipation of some costs that we're going to have there. I'd also ask, excuse me, ask that this be passed as an emergency.
Okay, does anybody else have any questions on this ordinance?
Gail, I'd like to make a motion to go to the final reading on ordinance 2020 day 68.
Okay, Mark makes a motion.
That motion.
Suspend the rules, sorry.
I will second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion to take 2020 day 68 to the final reading and a second, Julie, roll call.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes. Okay, ordinance number 2020 day 68 is now in the final reading, open for discussion again.
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2020 day 68.
Okay, we have a motion to pass ordinance number 2020 day 68. Is there a?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, Dr. Fowler seconds. Roll call, Julie.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yeah.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yeah. Okay, ordinance number 2020 day 68 passes seven to oh, final reading. Next, we have ordinance number 2020 day 9.
Ordinance number 2020 to 69 entitled ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director and/or Mayor to apply for and accept grant and/or loan funds under round 35 of Ohio Public Works Commission OPWC funding to be used for the State Route 598 widening, widening project and declaring an emergency.
Okay, yeah, this is the first ordinance tonight that we added, added to the agenda. Since this didn't go through any committees, Mayor or whoever would like to take this, go ahead.
Sure, what we wanted to be able to do is to, to move away from what had been an annual application for stormwater funds and use this OPWC grant and potential loan for the widening project. This will reduce the amount that we'll have to come up with the balance of that in the 2021 budget. So we're asking for a significant amount of loan money. And what we hope to do is pay that back over 20 years and will be for both the stormwater management, meaning the widened ditches, and for the, the highway itself. So that, that, that's the, we have one more project in the pipeline for the, the stormwater on the east side. And the next round after that, we want to use this, so it'll be available, excuse me, in July of 2021. If we go ahead and apply this way.
Okay, the numbers I have here in front of me is 185,000 for grant monies and 315,000 is a 0% loan. Is that correct?
That's what we're hoping for. That's what we're going to apply for. We'll see if that gets approved and, and we'll, you know, it's, as you know, for many years, it, it's one step at a time. This is the first step. And it will make next year's financing of the big, is what I would often call the big project. It really puts that into, you know, we've got to, we've got an equation and, and if we can get these dollars.
Okay, do you know where these loan dollars are going to be coming from? These are.
Right, they would, they would come from future income out of the stormwater fund, and they would be paid for by future gas tax dollars that are paid into the state highway fund, Fund 202.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Earlston, did you have a question?
It was already answered, thank you. I did, yes, but it got answered.
So, Mr. O'Leary, uh, the project on the east side stormwater, uh, is that the last one and it'll be completed? And then the, the future monies will enter into this equation?
How I describe it as the, 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 we led a project today, by the way. Got a, I'm sure, a bid that is underestimated and qualified. We have one more project under design and funded. And then the next project, since we're getting into this, the next project is a, will be larger than the last few. I think the plan is to take a year break.
Okay.
Use the money for this, begin that debt stream, and then go back the year after that, which would be 2021, and apply a year from now for something that would likely stretch from First Avenue to out to East Park. There's a, it'd be hard to divide that up, Doc.
Right, so, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
Is there an urgency for this, Tom?
Yeah, I think that, uh, I think the, the meeting is in November, so.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2020 day 69.
Okay, Mark made a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2020 day 69. Go to the final reading. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, Mr. Richard seconds. Roll call, Julie.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes. Okay, ordinance number 2020 day 69 is now in final reading. Any further discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance 2020 dash 69.
Okay, Dr. Fowler makes a motion to pass ordinance number 2020 day 69.
I'll second Ivy.
Okay, Ivy, Mr. Ivy makes a second. Roll call, Julie.
Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins. Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes. Okay, ordinance.
2020 69, just.
Ordinance number 2020 day 69 has passed on a final reading, seven to oh, taking us to ordinance number 2020 day 70.
Ordinance number 2020 dash 70 entitled ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to purchase under a joint purchasing program pursuant to revised Code 948 without competitive bidding, pipelining services through HGAC and declaring an emergency.
Okay, this is a, a second ordinance that was added to the agenda tonight. I had a, I get to the top of it here. Anyway, I believe I seen in this ordinance here, I seen where the, where the bid is non-competitive. Is this the one that? I just wondered what the reason for the non-competitive bid is.
Nikki, go ahead if you're there.
Yep, I can take this. Gail, this is much like we do through the state procurement system or the NJPA that we bought the playground equipment. It's essentially prebid for us. There are other statutory cities that use the same company. This is one of those very specialized services. So that's the reason we're trying to get to a company that provides this particular service. This will be lining the 24-inch pipe in Heisey Park and also the one down Switzer Drive. Both of them are infiltrated by tree roots, so this lining will help with that. The, the ongoing issues we have, but again, this is just a joint purchasing alliance. And like I said, it's, we do with salt, chemicals, all kinds of different stuff.
I have a question.
Okay, go ahead, Tammy.
Nikki, what do you mean by prebid? Is it because we're like doing it with somebody else that it's already been kind of?
Yep, they submit companies, all the companies who provide this particular service will submit their, their quotes. I don't know if they do it per foot, whatever, and the lowest and best bidder is the one that becomes the, the prebid company.
Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's the same. We did exactly the same thing with the playground equipment. Playworld was the, the winning bidder for that type of stuff through NJPA.
Okay, thank you.
And we do similar things with vehicle purchases and other, it, it just speeds up the process and it hopefully ensures that we're getting a, a good deal and it's approved statewide.
Yes, absolutely.
Doc, that's what I was going to say. I would, everything from fire trucks to pickup trucks to cruisers. It's, it's whether you want to debate whether it's good or not, it's a pretty common practice to.
It straightlines the process, and I, I suppose that if you spent months and months, you could nickel and dime it a little bit lower. But you know, you have pretty much confidence that you're spending your money wisely and you get the job done so people can reap the benefits of the improvement quicker.
Absolutely. We don't have anyone that can spec out this kind of work so that you could, that you could bid it out. So we get a sort of prebid, although that's an odd expression. That's really, we have a pre-qualified contractor at a already advertised and competitively bid price, so.
Is this for a water line?
It's for, it's for the, Nikki, go ahead.
It's sewer lines in Heisey Park and on Switzer Drive, Mark. Both of them are, we've root cut them time and again, but the one on, on Switzer's bad. And this is the solution we've come up with. Instead of, you know, clear cutting the boulevard on Switzer Drive, we're going to line this pipe so it doesn't keep happening.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, six months ago, we were going to replace the Switzer line. Decided that was just too high cost, too intrusive. So in the process of fixing, this is the, the major trunk line that runs in where the old motorcycle trails were coming through Heisey Park, that we fixed that five or six years ago. And we're back to the same situation where the roots have infiltrated. This time, we're going to cut out the roots and line it. Maybe we'll get a little bit longer life, but.
Is this a, a storm, storm sewer?
Sanitary. It's gray water.
Okay.
Mayor, not sure if you know, or Ms. Ward, what's the life expectancy of these liners? Just curious.
I don't know specifically, Aaron, but as Andy and I were talking about it, this is a long-term fix. You know, it's, it's not like a root cutting where every four or five years, they have to come back and do this. It is a much longer term fix, but it, like, like Tom said, rather than replacing that line, you know, and then we'd have issues with laterals still having, roots still having access that way. So.
Sure.
It's, it, yeah, it's a longer term fix.
I was just, every quarter of a century, I think that's a pretty acceptable or so.
I think, you're right, Aaron, and I think that the, the, this is sort of a middle cost fix between just root cutting and knowing it's going to be back in a few years. The, the, why we're trying to get it fixed this way is the way we find out that it's, you know, that it has roots have clogged it back up is that you start getting backups in Walker and on up through that part of town, which is pretty low lying. So we want to try to get ahead of that and, and so that's the idea of the project.
Mr. Baldinger, if there's no other questions, I would like to make a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance 2020 dash 70 and proceed to the final vote.
Okay, Mr. Ivy makes a motion to suspend the rules on 2020 day 70 and move to the final reading. Do I have a second?
I second that motion.
Fowler seconds that motion. Julie, roll call.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes. The ordinance number 2020 day 70 is now in the final reading. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to pass ordinance 2020 day 70.
Okay, Mr. Triplett made a motion to pass ordinance number 2020 day 70. Do I have a second?
Second that, Botkin.
Again, Botkin second. Roll call, Julie.
Mr. Triplett.
Yes.
Mr. Botkins.
Yes.
Ms. Earlston.
Yes.
Dr. Fowler.
Yes.
Mr. Ivy.
Yes.
Mr. Richard.
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger.
Yes. Okay, ordinance 2020 day 70 is passed for the final reading on seven to oh vote, taking us to the third ordinance tonight, 2020. Third ordinance that we put on to the agenda tonight, ordinance number 2020 day 71. Julie, go ahead and read that.
Ordinance number 2020 to 71 entitled ordinance authorizing the submission and acceptance of a voca grant from the Ohio Attorney General and authorizing the Safety Service Director and Director of Law to sign the necessary grant documents pertaining thereto and declaring an emergency.
Okay, since this was not added prior to tonight, I imagine Brian Trish, take this one.
Or Thomas.
Thomas.
Uh, well, let me start. Brian, please feel free to add in. This is a annual thing, members of council. This is what funds our Victims of Crime Assistance Program. This runs through my office with Jim Scott. As you can see in the ordinance, it has the cash match and the potential. Uh, as you can see in the ordinance, it has the cash match and the potential uh grant proceeds. Uh, this is very standard and very in keeping with the dollar amounts that have been. Uh, expended in this purposes for the last couple, three years.
The only thing different is they are not doing any Sava funds.
That's right. It's that, so we only have the one grant this year, but nonetheless, this will allow us to continue the program.
Okay, uh, pretty much an annual program and it is.
Oh, it very much is. Yes, we've been doing it since I've been law director and long before.
Yeah, long before that, yeah. So. Anybody else got anything to add or questions?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mark.
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules on twenty twenty dash seventy one.
Hey, Mr. Triplett makes a motion to suspend the rules on ordinance twenty twenty day seventy one. Go to the final reading. Uh, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconds, uh, roll call Julie.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Your Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes. Okay, ordinance twenty twenty day seventy one is now in the final reading. Do we have further discussion on ordinance on this ordinance?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to pass ordinance twenty dash seventy one.
Okay, Mr. Richard makes a nor or a motion to pass ordinance number twenty twenty day seventy one. Do I have a second?
Botkin.
Mr. Botkin seconds. Roll call Julie.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Dr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes. Ordinance twenty twenty day seventy one passes as a final reading, seven to zero. Um, taking us to our. Ordinance number twenty twenty day seventy two, which is the fourth and final one we've added tonight. Um, go ahead and read that with you, Julie.
Ordinance number twenty twenty dash seventy two and town ordinance authorizing the Safety Service Director to utilize CARES Act funds for a utility credit program and declaring an emergency.
Okay, so this didn't go through any committee committees. Um, somebody want to take this? I don't know if uh Nikki wants to take it or the mayor.
Well, I think the I'll start if I could, Gail. I think we have discussed, although it. Didn't wasn't voted out of committee in ordinance form. There was a discussion. About using the a large percentage of our avail available COVID funds to uh fund this. Um. Uh, utility credit, utility rebate. I think credit is probably a closer term, but. Um, what and and you can see now on the screen, if you, you know, so you can see the ordinance. It's uh relatively straightforward. We've also developed uh for in draft form. A uh letter that will go out. In this month's uh utility bills. Uh, that's why there's some urgency. Uh, and I appreciate Julie's help and. I think Thomas got on the phone to make sure that he is, if you will, signed off on this. This uh baseline or basic ordinance. But uh we didn't. Uh, we are recommending that we only include city. Residents who are also our utility customers, so that, if you will, disqualifies a few hundred. Um, utility customers outside the city. And uh we didn't try to get into limiting the amount there. I think all of us are aware of people. Who have uh multiple utility bills in their name. Um, we're gonna I make the credit available. The recommendation is to make the credit available. Uh, under the um. The account holder's name. So a letter will go out. You'll have to sign off saying that you've been adversely impact impacted. And then you can either, you know, bring that to the office with your payment. Or return that signed amount and then we'll apply that. Uh, to the fun. Thank, excuse me for running on a little bit. We plan to have a line that allows the customer to check. Which utility account they want the credit to be applied to. So there'll be some sort of choice in that. I think it's straightforward. I think it's based on the principle that everybody in the community, whether their utility bill ran late or not. Has been adversely affected by the COVID. The language we've got in the ordinance. Is real close to what is in the uh state legislation in the CARES Act, so. Uh, we wanted to follow that in terms of who in a technical sense would be qualified, but we're gonna allow anyone uh. To sign up for the credit if they feel they've been adversely affected.
Okay, yeah, um, as we talked before, I think this is the this CARES Act money. We've got quite a sum. I think it's six hundred thousand plus. And uh it's money that we gotta get spent before the first of the year. Um. That that has come into the city, so uh I think I got a suspicion there's gonna be some urgency in this ordinance.
I would agree with you, Gail, and I would say that when you net out the non. Uh, city businesses and non-city residents, you're talking in the neighborhood of fifty-seven, fifty-eight hundred accounts, so. That will um. I can imagine some people will miss this information or, if you will, sleep through this opportunity. I have expectation that we'll have a real high uh participation rate in returning this. So I'd expect somewhere between five hundred and eighty thousand and six hundred thousand of that. Um, we're still working on uh trying to satisfy some auditor requirements. On uh taking some of the balance then of the uh. In the COVID fund and applying it to some of our um extraordinary operational expenses specifically in the park, so. That anticipate the next question, what are we gonna do after this utility rebate goes through? Uh, we have some uh expectation that we'll have some qualifying expenses. It's just not on the agenda tonight.
So I got a question, Tom. No matter how many. Uh, you. Services are in your name, they can apply for that many?
Uh, yes. And we're gonna apply that to residences. I think, you know, some of the um. Commercial landlords. Uh, we're gonna apply that to residents that live at the place and, you know, I can think of two apartment complexes off the top of my head that don't pay water and sewer. There is an account with us. For one meter. We'll have a one account there that we can credit. Although all the residences have, in many cases, an electric bill. Think we've. All of us can think of uh places that have all-electric heat apartment complexes. So what I would expect there in those apartments is that the resident who has an account with us. Would apply their credit to electric. And the the owner of the complex who has one meter with us on water would apply it to themselves, I suppose. We'll see if they even. If that a company like that would go through with their uh. With their uh credit application.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I have a I have a. Um, it the hundred dollars per account, is that um? Something that the city, the stipulation the city put on, or is that something through the CARES Act? Is that a?
No, it's kind of our, it's simple arithmetic. It's. Knowing how many city customer accounts we have. And then looking at available funds, it divides out pretty, you know, we'll have. Between five hundred and eighty and six hundred thousand dollars, so that's that's kind of where it came from. It's not a requirement, and as we researched this, different cities along the way have a have made. Similar but different in terms of the amount uh credits to their customers, other AMP communities, for instance.
Um, and and when do we have to use this, these funds by?
It's December twenty eighth unless there's an extension. In a little bit.
Okay, and what happened?
Go ahead, please.
Do we just lose the money then if it doesn't all get used or?
It just, I, you know, that's a really neat question. I was thinking about that. Uh, I imagine that they would, the whoever sent the money to begin with, which was the state of Ohio. And I'm not sure if Brian knows this, we received the check. I believe from the county auditor. So I'm not sure how exactly, Tammy, they go about recalling it, but my expectation is they know. Particularly with this round because it went to the city based on population. Um, I don't know the answer as to who sent the the check, but. Uh, something tells me they know where they sent that last three hundred and sixty thousand, so. Uh.
Mr. Mayor, if I can.
Yeah.
Jump in just for a second on that. The the my understanding uh is that if it is not used by the time deadline, we would probably send that money back to the county and the county would account for it back. The state, which then accounts for it back to the federal government.
Yeah. Uh, so we we attack it in our account. And we like to expense it out. There's a separate fund that's been set up, so we're.
Right.
You know, I I guess the the main part I'm uh, the point I was trying to make is that we have um. Uh, a large percentage of that. Uh, of the amount that we've been granted. Uh, that can that can be accounted for and go out to the largest number of our utility customers, so. I'm really in favor of that. In in my mayor's remarks, I'll talk a little bit about what the state did. With some of their CARES money, which has um. Taken a little bit of second guessing about, well, why didn't you give the money to businesses? There's a state program. Uh, that we think will uh for those folks who get funded will be a. Will help businesses. That was another item that had been discussed at the committee level. I guess. I'll stop after saying this seems to me to be the 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 biggest impact uh. Quickest to deliver uh idea that we've had and uh. You know, people who are gonna use heap. Can use this money to pay down a water or sewer balance they have. So that then they can qualify with community action for additional heat funding, so. It's uh, it's not perfect, but I think it a lot of time has been spent on figuring out how to. Come up with a qualifying program that can work within this December twenty eighth timeframe. I just think uh expecting Congress to give us an extension. Um, I'm not sure that's a wise step to uh not to take or to take, so.
Yeah, I think there's a, we got a lot of, a lot of people that sure could use a little extra help right now and. Especially with this flaring back up again, I don't know. People are gonna be out of work again or not, but the I know there's gonna be a lot of people that can really benefit from this along with businesses. Um. So, yeah, I think, like I said before, I got a suspicion that we need to. Some urgency to this so we can get this underway and I I think it's uh pretty well thought out and I think it's.
I have a question, Gail.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Is uh, is is this possibly gonna be reflected in the December utility bill being the holidays coming up and all?
Yeah, what we hope, Aaron, good question, is that if, and this is a plug for suspending the rule, I s- I suppose, if we pass it tonight. Uh, the insert will go into the November bill. And then we're we'll set a deadline for uh mailing in the credit. I'm not sure what that date is, somewhere in the middle of November. And then that credit would be applied. Um, you know, another consideration is that. We stop writing checks. The city stops writing checks in mid-December. So we want to get that to the auditor's office or however that check, that rebate. It won't be a check going out, but we want to get that accounted for um for the end of the year.
All right, thank you.
I have a question, Gail.
Go ahead, Mark.
So the landlords that put all the their renters in their name, how's that gonna work, Tom?
Well, that the account is in their name. And so um. The. The credit will go to the account holder.
So. If they have eight apartments, they can get qualified for eight hundred bucks.
I think the way that's written, that's right. That's correct.
Are those all considered separate accounts or is?
Yes.
Oh. Does that go?
And I have a question as well. Is that, would you consider that to be the exception to the rule? I mean, if somebody's, if the landlord has all the utilities in their name, the chances are pretty high that. The arrangement in the rent is to pay the water, the sewage and the electric, then that's not a, I mean, that's not a. Huge occurrence throughout the community, is it?
The. I think that's an on, you know, it sounds like baloney, but it's not. I think Mark raises a really good point. And without getting into being sympathetic to landlords or anti landlords or even getting into that, I think I would, I'd argue that. Uh, landlords, generally speaking, in our community have been hard-pressed. I don't think they have been uh. Uh. You know, in interested in kicking out their folks. I'm having a foreclosure isn't the word. Somebody help me on the word.
Eviction.
Thank you. I don't think they've been eviction crazy. I think they're kind of taking a beating this year. And uh, so I I absolutely understand what what uh Mark. Is saying and in some of the committee conversations, I think that was one of the the points of. Either looking at, let's keep it simple and whoever has the account gets the credit versus some sort of cap on. The number of credits to any one individual. The second idea seemed to complicate this whole process. Uh, and and um. So that's the way it's, that's the way it's presented. There'll be some individuals. Whose business is land, you know, being a landlord, who will get a larger credit. I think that's probably the case. Among the commercial accounts. There's some businesses that have more than one account. So in those situations, that would also be true.
But it just seems like this is the fairest way to distribute this amount of money in the time that we have, when we're actually counting rooftops within the city limits that use our power. Somebody has to pay for each one of those rooftops, so. All in all, this seems fair and evenly distributed throughout the community. Everybody benefits in some way or another, especially two weeks before Christmas.
Yeah, I I looked at the, I mean, I agree with that, Aaron, and I would, if you look at. That kind of qualifying. I did a kind of quick and dirty. It wouldn't raise if, let's say. You just for the sake of making the point, five hundred dollars was the most that anyone would get. And that 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 gypped or short-changed twenty people or thirty of folks who are. You know, landlords and have a lot of accounts. It really only would raise. Our our rebate or our credit by a a very small amount. So the, you know, for an extra five or ten dollars, you might be able to limit. Some of these folks who are uh commercial landlords or some of the businesses. That are set up with more than one a meter, more than one account. So, yeah, I agree with you, Aaron. It's it um. You know, it's one, if we keep. Trying to fine tune it too much, then we'll end up up against the wall and, you know, have trouble getting the money uh through the system or getting the credit supplied through the system. So, anyway.
Ms. Earleston, do you have a question?
Well, I was just gonna say, thank you, Mr.. Um, if there are no more questions or discussion or discussions about this, I would like to um suspend the rules and move uh. Ordinance number twenty twenty seventy two onto um its final reading.
Okay, Ms. Earleston. To uh, to uh, take twenty twenty day seventy two to uh. To suspend the rules and take it to the final reading. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, or Ivy seconds. Uh, roll call Julie.
Ms. Earleston?
Yes.
Mr. Ivy?
Yes.
Mr. Richard?
Yes.
Mr. Triplett?
Yes.
Mr. Botkins?
Yes.
Dr. Fowler?
Yes.
Mr. Baldinger?
Yes. Okay, ordinance number twenty twenty day seventy two is now in the final reading. Is there any further discussion? On this ordinance?
I'll make a motion to pass ordinance twenty twenty day seventy-two, Gail.
Mister Triplett makes a motion to pass ordinance not twenty twenty day seventy-two. Do I have a second?
I will second it, Earleston.
Okay, Mrs. Earleston seconds, uh roll call, Julie.
Mister Triplett.
Yep.
Miss Earleston.
Yes.
Doctor Fowler.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Botkins.
Yes.
Mister Baldinger.
Yes. Okay, um ordinance number twenty twenty day seventy-two passes as a final reading, seven oh vote uh. That takes us to resolution twenty twenty day fifteen, so then and now certificate um. For first reading, Julie, would you like to read that and?
Resolution number twenty twenty dash fifteen entitled resolution approving and ratifying the prior acts of the department heads and safety service director. And approving a then announced certificate for said expenditure and declaring an emergency.
Okay, um. Resolution uh twenty twenty day fifteen, I believe, came through finance committee and I'm gonna turn this over to Brian, I believe, for. For further clarification.
Yes, this is a then and now needed for the urban paving or the Harding Way project, depending on how you wanna refer to it. Uh, Mayor, I believe this was for some of the extra striping, but I could be wrong on that. Uh, if we can, I'd like to pass this as an emergency to get this on on the way.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on this uh resolution?
I'll make a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty dash fifteen onto uh the final reading by suspending the rules.
Okay, Doc Fowler made a motion to suspend the rules on twenty two resolution twenty twenty days fifteen. And go to the final reading. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
And Mister Ivy seconds, Julie, roll call.
Doctor Fowler.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yay.
Mister Botkins. Miss Earleston.
Yes.
Mister Baldinger.
Yes. Uh, resolution twenty twenty days fifteen passes on a final reading, uh six to one vote.
No, I I voted yay, Gail.
I'm sorry.
It sounded like nay, I wrote nay.
Yay.
Okay.
I think everybody pause for a moment.
It was to suspend the rules, Gail.
So uh, okay, to suspend the rules on twenty twenty fifteen passes seven oh.
Mark, make up for it.
I'll make a motion to pa- pass resolution twenty twenty dash fifteen.
Okay, Mister Triplett makes a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty days fifteen.
And I'll second it.
Roll call, Julie.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Miss Earleston, no, Miss Earleston.
Yes.
Doctor Fowler.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Botkins.
Yes.
Mister Baldinger.
Yes. Resolution twenty twenty day fifteen passes on the final reading, seven oh vote. Uh, takes us to uh. Resolution twenty twenty day sixteen, tax rates for a final reading, Julie, wanna read that?
Yep, resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen is a resolution accepting the amounts and rates as determined by the budget commission. And authorizing the necessary tax rates and certifying them to the county auditor.
Okay, um, this year, I believe, also come through finance and uh. This is pretty much a a year to year thing that we do every year, certify this to the auditor every year, so uh. Uh, Brian or anybody wanna take it from there or?
Uh, yes, Gail, you you hit it exactly on this. It's the annual approv- approval of the uh. Effectively, the property tax resolution uh that we pass annually. And this came from the county and we're just affirming that, so if you could pass this also as an emergency, so we can send it back to the county auditor.
Alright, thanks, Brian. Anybody else have anything?
No, Gail, I'd like to make a motion, if nobody has anything else, uh to uh suspend rules on. Resolution twenty twenty dash sixteen and take it to the final reading.
Okay, Mister Richard makes a motion to take resolution twenty twenty day sixteen to the final reading. Roll call, Julie.
I haven't got a second yet.
In that motion.
Thanks.
Seconds.
Alright, now I can go. Mister Richard.
Yes.
Doctor Fowler.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Mister Botkins.
Yeah.
Miss Earleston.
Yes.
Mister Baldinger.
Yes. Okay, resolution twenty twenty day sixteen is now in the final reading. Is there additional discussion on this?
I'll make a motion to pass resolution twenty twenty day sixteen.
Okay, Mister. The pass ordinance twenty twenty day sixteen, and do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Mrs. Earleston seconds, Julie, roll call.
Mister Triplett.
Yes.
Miss Earleston.
Yes.
Doctor Fowler.
Yes.
Mister Ivy.
Yes.
Mister Richard.
Yes.
Mister Botkins.
Yes.
Mister Baldinger.
Yes. Okay, resolution twenty twenty day sixteen passes on the final reading, seven oh vote, um that. Wraps up all the legislation for tonight. Uh, next we go to other business, um. We guys should have some committee reports, so uh Mister Richard, do you wanna start with laws and ordinances?
Uh, yes, uh laws and ordinance will be meeting on the third election day at seven o'clock. Here on Zoom, I'm assuming.
Okay, thanks.
Utilities will be on November fourth.
Okay.
Uh, police, fire and health is gonna be on Thursday, the nineteenth.
Okay. Um, parks committee, Aaron.
Aaron, it's supposed to be on the ele- you're muted, it's it's the eleventh, it would be the eleven.
Oh, yeah, I said on the eleventh at seven on WZOM live.
Um, I know that's Veterans Day, but it's no problem, so.
Economic Development Airport on um November the seventeenth, Tuesday at seven o'clock on Zoom.
Okay, Mister Botkins, uh streets and alleys, trees, bridges.
That'll be on uh November twelfth at seven via Zoom.
Okay, I believe we got everything except my finance committee, and that's gonna be November the eighteenth. At seven PM via Zoom. Okay, is there any other business that anybody needs to conduct tonight? If not, we'll go to the elected official report, uh start out with auditor Brian Trish.
Uh, just very briefly, we may uh ask council or to hold a special meeting yet this week. Uh, mayor referred to some of the funds that we need to pass for COVID to this the uh parks. We hope to have that legislation done and uh Julie will be notifying and making that request. Uh, I wanna thank everybody for their kindness in my absence, and uh we're back to staff and going from there in my office. So hopefully we'll start catching up. Thank you.
Okay, okay, I did hear from one one council member when we were talking before. That Thursday wouldn't work. Does Friday work for everyone?
No.
No, who who doesn't it work for? Oh, Ken, don't work, Ken.
Friday's gonna be bad, our bowling tournament starts Friday.
That's right, okay, so, alright.
Good for me.
Okay, so Thursday, alright.
Gail, I would, if I might, I would say uh not to be disagreeable, but. Uh, I think there are probably other ways uh bridge this. There's an internal issue of not enough money for payroll in the parks fund. I think there's probably a way to handle that until the next regular meeting, so if we can't. They're my biggest concern going into tonight, y'all satisfied, which was setting up that uh credit program. Cause there's so much, there's, you know, such a close timetable on. So if if it turns out that we can't get a quorum, it wouldn't be the uh, you know, from my perspective at least. It wouldn't be the end of the world. It's more of a trying to um make sure that we have enough money in the parks. And uh, so anyway.
Yeah, I think um the way I understood it, we got um only one discrepancy on Thursday and one discrepancy on Friday. So that leaves us with two. To meet either of those two days, so if you need it, uh we can still pick either one, as long as we got two members.
Does anybody else have a problem with either day?
N- no, and I will make Thursday work, and I I agree with Gail. I think um we we should have a meeting if if w- w- we need to do things by the book. We need to have a Zoom meeting, not.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But go through however uh legal things might be, I I I think a meeting's definitely in order.
Yeah.
So either 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 day is fine with me.
Okay.
Today is gonna be fine with me also, so, yeah.
Okay, as long as everybody else, then if.
Right.
Then if, yeah.
We only have six, that's fine regardless of the day.
Right, yeah, yeah, so that works. And I think that, yeah, cause I don't know, I don't know if we can close the month in a negative, that's the only thing I'm worried about, so.
I don't wanna do anything that raises a an asterisk or a red flag.
I have a question, it could uh if Mister Watt isn't able to attend and Mister Baldinger's not able to vote, would we actually only have five on one of those two nights?
No, he can vote.
You can vote, okay, thank you. Okay, great, thank you.
Are we talking a committee meeting or are we talking a council meeting?
It's a council meeting.
I was thinking we was talking a committee meeting, okay.
Oh, it'd be a council meeting.
Okay, yeah, so. Alright, yeah.
It won't take ten minutes.
Right.
Something that's agreeable to both the auditor's office and um the service director and the mayor's office and.
Yeah.
We'll get it to you by the end of the week. I really think um there's, you know, there's there's ways to get. There's a shortfall in payroll, that's what Julie's saying. You don't wanna end that a- account in the red.
No.
I'm really not worried about it, although there's a little bit of a dust up, if you will, over it. I'm not worried about it. Not and I can tell you why, but it's, there's no reason getting into the detail. That would that would cut into my otherwise eloquent remarks about the state program, so I would hate to do that.
Please, let's not do that.
I agree.
Oh, man, I wanna bite, but I won't, cause I have no idea what you're talking about, but God, I wanna bite.
Okay, let's move on to the treasures reported. Rodney available tonight?
Nope, he's not in attendance.
And we'll skip the treasure and go to law director, Thomas Palmer.
Yeah, just really quick, I'd like to piggyback on what Brian said, appreciate the kind thoughts during my absence. And I'd also like to thank council for your uh passing of the VOKA uh grant this evening, that's a very important program. Very proud of that, and uh thanks again.
Okay, um, I think uh we're down to the mayor's report, I believe.
Sure, I'll be merciful. I I would only mention, uh it's almost a plug or a commercial. That uh that galleon area businesses, Crawford County businesses. Of less than twenty-five employees are eligible to apply for ten thousand dollars worth of grant funding. It actually is from the state through Congress, it's, if you will, this a- another chunk of the uh CARES Act funding. And part of why we put all of our uh uh. Uh, money, the city's money into that rebate program earlier, that credit program. So I just encourage businesses to to uh tune into that, uh talked about it last night a little bit. I believe the chamber and other business organizations are trying to get the word out, but. Uh, a little bit like the arithmetic of how we came up with the the hundred dollar credit. When you see that this county has a half million dollars, uh and up to ten thousand dollars, that looks like fifty winners. And, you know, maybe a lot more folks that applied and did not um make it on the first come, first served basis. So I'll stop at that point, uh we can provide information to the businesses. Uh, I know the chamber can about how to apply and when to be ready to hit that uh. That uh enter button or submit button, and that'll come Monday morning, so that's the main thing um.
Mister Mayor, how much did you say that was?
It's a half million divided among all eighty-eight counties. So there's a pool of funds for Crawford, a half million, up to ten thousand dollars. Uh, and I think it's ten thousand dollars, I'd I'm adding that up to, I think it's ten thousand dollars.
It is ten thousand.
I for less.
Ten thousand for Crawford?
No.
Per business.
Wow, okay, that's wonderful.
Crawford, so it's 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 a little bit like that hundred dollars, you know, doesn't, we have, what do you mean, we have a six hundred thousand dollars? By the time you divide it up, it's a hundred dollars in account, doesn't seem like a lot. Um, this will, I'm I'm concerned will go real fast, so I think there's, uh we've been. It's at the mayor's office, trying to get the word out, trying to get as many people lined up to hit that submit button at. At uh ten o'clock on Monday, so a little bit of a moving target, but I think it's really good news and um. You know, I think uh whoever gets there first will get the quote unquote fair share, but that's the. That's the state program, and that allowed us to put all of our money into utilities. Rather than trying to balance it with some sort of additional business um assistance. So, all right, let me do one more thing, quick, Gail, there also is, if you are in need of um. Housing assistance, trying to avoid being uh evicted. Uh, community action is gonna receive um an an a different slice, but a different amount of. State-funded CARES Act, it's gonna go through the Community Action Commission, so if you find yourself in that circumstance. Uh, about ready to get kicked out, uh then, you know, I would get, I would look for those dollars and see if that can't keep you. In a position where you're not messing with um eviction, so. Anyway, thanks for listening and uh encourage the local businesses uh to get ready to line up. It's almost like trying to buy sporting event tickets, you know, I think we're online trying to get our businesses uh. Qualified uh in as large a number as we can. Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor. Time setting in for Mister Watt's uh absence tonight, uh. We'll excuse his comments tonight, and uh I really don't have anything for his place, I just wanna wish everybody. Up there that is sick in the hospital to get well soon and get back to work, so. That being said, do we have a motion for adjournment?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
I.
I oppose, same sign. Okay, we are adjourned at eight ten PM.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you.
Good night, everybody.